God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. This time Commissioner Hamilton will lead us in prayer. Afterwards, please remain standing for the pledge to our nation's flag.
Let's pray. Gracious God, we come to you tonight during this season just to thank you for the greatest gift that you ever gave us and the gift of your son. Lord, we thank you for bringing back Commissioner Hester and Wilson to us tonight and that you've given them healing in the previous weeks following up to today. Also, we lift up Commissioner Hooks. We pray that you continue to give him strength and comfort as you heal his body as well and he's back with us. God, most of all, we ask tonight that you would give us wisdom and insight and direction to lead your people well, that God we would make decisions based on data and insight. And for all these things, God, we will give you thanks. We pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence yourself. Sign in if you've not already signed in, please.
Hey Kenny, Shannon, we need something to go right, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, while we're doing that, we do have a 12-day rule. We're gonna wait tonight and we'll do it at the end. Just remind me, he's... Just don't want to close out without doing anything. Looks like everybody's up and running now. So, need a motion for approving the minutes of the November 18th, 2024, in this meeting. Motion by doubt, second by gang, Commissioner Dunn.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gann.
Nothing, sir.
Any questions? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Mine still isn't working yet, so. I'll try again. All right, it just came out. They just wanted you to come over here.
All right, motion carries. Acceptance of committee reports and correspondence. Motion bound, Ron Berry, seconded by Ben Wilson. Please, Mr. Berry.
Yes, sir. Just a couple on number two. Is there a possibility that out of some of those funds that we can merge with someone or start some type of mental health facility?
There's discussions ongoing about that. In fact, we left open the possibility of opioid council. You can see the long term where we're headed. It will expand from strictly opioid funds to working in mental health in some way. Now, restricted by how we can spend those funds, but I mean, this is, they're so closely related. Billy Edmonds from Free Medical Clinic is a member of that board or council, so he's bringing us information every month about what's happening down there in Rockwood with that. So, we think there's a potential that we could do some things. Will we come back to you all with some recommendations, but a lot has to happen before we get there.
And 13, on that Oak Ridge Reservation Communities Line, can you let us know when those meetings are in case I notice they have some folks from Oak Ridge and the public there.
Sure. Absolutely. And they, so Mayor Frank is the chair this year, and anytime you have to do post notice, but we'll give you all special notice anytime we receive a meeting invitation.
Okay, and the... On the...
Kelly, do you get that?
On 14, on the... Mr. Chairman, on that date, I know there was a motion to, which we're not gonna need, is that to the end of the year?
Well, we won't need it anymore. We'll let it die in a normal manner.
Just in the event that we may need it, will we just make that at the end of the year?
So, we don't have a resolution to end here for it. If there is more funds coming up, I will probably just re-slate or slate the same individuals.
I just was thinking there might be a need for maybe one more. I don't know.
Do you have some insight, President Stone?
No, sir.
That we're gonna give some, 10 million?
I shared it for you. Number 16, Alba Help, can you tell us where that nine acre, I'm having a hard time trying to figure out where that nine acres of brownfield is on Gateway.
I had to go back and see. Oh, it was, I mean, it is, that is the building.
Or the whole site. Is that whole site?
That's the whole site, yeah.
The whole site's brownfield?
For this grant, I don't know if y'all remember, when we were in Chattanooga last year, TDEC did that seminar that most of us went to. And their instruction to us was, you're dumb if you don't ask for this money. Because all it took was a windshield tour of your county to identify potential brownfield sites to get that brag grant, which we received and was just shy of $20,000. We're now moving to phase two, which is a more focused identification of those sites that would then lead to some study on how it'll be.
Okay, so then that's due from the dye house and other things over the years, which means that Harriman may be able to use it on that, on the old burning site there as well?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely. They'll be eligible to look. I would encourage all communities to do it. They tell us you're dumb if you don't try.
I just couldn't figure out where that nine acre. That's all I have against you.
It's gotta be the whole building.
Commissioner Wilson, you have a second?
Nothing further.
I'm sorry, Junior, would you?
No, he's next.
Okay. All right, any discussions on the acceptance of committee reports and correspondence? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries 14. Any note reads, okay, we've got them posted here for you.
Number 3.
And is that ours, Greg, with you?
Yes, it is.
All right.
You might want to approve that one.
All right, now here are motions in a second.
Motion.
All right, motion by Kirby, seconded by Commissioner Henderson, Commissioner Kirby.
I didn't push, sorry.
Henderson.
This is Junior and Charlie.
Okay, I didn't see anything. I just seen the hand, so. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham.
Commissioner Henderson.
Appreciate your wellness, sir.
Commissioner Cunningham.
I just wanted to vote for Frank.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. All right, this time, a hearing of our delegation, so if you want to address the wrong county commissioners, please step forward this time. We do have a three-minute time limit. We've got multiple examples of this.
Hi.
What's your name, ma'am?
I'm Savannah Anthony. I'm a member of Voices for Change at Rome County High School.
Okay.
And then I'm Hannah Rades, and I'm the co-leader of Voices for Change at Rome County High School.
Is that Mike on?
We're gonna be speaking about homeless problems in Roman County, and I did a study. What even brought this about? On Monday morning, November 18th, I was driving to school like any other day. It was 57 degrees, which for any person with a bare minimum of clothes on would consider freezing. I passed the local Kingston homeless man that everyone sees and usually has nothing nice to say about, but for some reason, something fell in my heart. I looked down at my nice clothes and my big fluffy jacket, and then looked at his thin hoodie covered with holes and his ripped ragged jeans, and his facial expression with a frown so big it manifested to my own face, and I instantly felt a wave of overwhelming sadness and immediately vowed to fight for this cause.
So, the percentages in backs that we found in Roman County is 10.6 of the population experiences severe housing issues. And from 2014 to 2023, the indicator declined 1.05 percent. It's extremely difficult to get a percentage of the homeless in our given county, but it is outstanding.
Why can't the homeless just get a job? It is more evident in today's society that homeless people do not have equal access to education, healthcare, and economic opportunities. Taking from the article in July, the National Low Income Housing Coalition reported that there was not a single state where a worker earning a full-time minimum wage salary could afford the modest two-bedroom apartment.
So, why should we act? Humans tend to base beliefs and social behaviors off of people around them. This is where social pressure comes into play. Social pressure is the definition. The influence exerted by society or group on an individual to be prone to expected behaviors, attitudes, or norms. They can walk the man by giving him clothes, shoes, hygiene, clean up, products, et cetera. It can cause a chain reaction or more hospitality from the community to the homeless or social pressure.
Why is the homeless population so bad in the United States? Individuals have stated that there are two major factors contributing to the rise of the homeless population. The first factor is poverty, as the lack of affordable housing market has gone up to 4.2% as of 2024, being an all-time high. The second factor is psychiatric issues and drug and alcohol addiction. About 38% abuse alcohol and 26 abuse drugs, and about 50% suffer from some form of mental illness.
How can we start? We can start all small by donating clothes, food, and other basic necessities to this man. That small action can manifest as hard to believe a patron. Second, we can bring more awareness to the homeless pandemic and start a fundraiser for a homeless shelter and funds for the homeless population in Roman County. There's currently no local homeless shelter in Roman County, but there is a homeless shelter located in Harriman. We should build homeless shelters with beds that are always open, and this should be on my plan.
How can we fundraise? Collaborations with clubs in the schools, peachy cafes, concessions at games, or even mom pausers. Another big way to gain money is selling products. They could be as simple as making crochets, stuffed animals, bracelets, cookies, sweets, selling bottled waters, et cetera. Another way to gain money would be dividing school gain from swarms, prom, and sports games into savings for the homeless project. Truly, this is a global catastrophic issue that people need to pay more attention to. Every life is worth the same, and if we could make this one step, it could help solve this chronic pandemic. Thank you.
And what grade are you two in, just for the record?
I'm a senior and...
I'm also a senior.
Both of you seniors in high school.
Yeah.
I appreciate you coming out and addressing the county commission on this.
That's very commendable.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, first of all, let me say thank you. This took a lot of work. So, and I appreciate that you do have to come here. You did this. This was sent to us, and we appreciate it. It was sent out to this office, and I think we've all read it. So, one of my favorite scriptures is, "Some have compassion making a difference." I really believe you're gonna make a difference, and so we appreciate every commission here. We serve people, and we serve the residents of Roman County. And we're obligated to serve. You're not obligated, and so we appreciate that you have this part desire to help. But do you have any idea, in your handout, you said it's hard to find out how many in the city or the county homeless? Have you found out anything since you've done this data?
I looked on records of the Rome County Health Department to try any, to find any percentages of the exact homeless rate in Rome County, and it wasn't giving me a clear answer. And in the article, it had said that it's very difficult to get a very clear pinpoint answer of the percentage of the homeless, but it does give the percentage of people that struggle with severe homelessness, but I could not find a direct percent of the homeless.
They're very transient, so. Are you working with any of the churches, local churches or organizations? Have you reached out to them to see how they're working with the homeless now?
I've been working with my church, New Life Church, and I've been trying to get a, some sort of drive going, but this has been my first step.
Please, please come back and give us an update on what's going on and maybe some ways that we can help you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Goss.
Mr. Chairman, I like when you young ladies are coming out now too. Actually, I had Ms. Anthony assist the Rome County High School actually to take our skills check off, which she's very bright, very smart, so they've got two bright young ladies leading us. Talking about the Mormon shelter, for those that, if you don't know about the Mormon shelter that Harriman has, it's in the Oakmont Hills School. It's in... It's been led by the Courts of Prayer. They've got a, they got a young lady that's doing a phenomenal job. I've actually started helping them sun. They started last year when Tim approached me and we, me and him and Wade went around a couple places, tried to open up some shelters. Last year, Rockwood and Harriman didn't have the exact amount of people we thought, but the Mormon shelter in Harriman is definitely an asset, not just the Harriman area, but Mayor Best, or if he wants to speak, any lady on it, just call. But they've got a good program going on there. It's just, we've got to figure a way to help them somehow. I mean, they need some, I mean, they've got so many needs. It's just, it's just totally unreal, so. I hope everybody backs this and tries to support this thing, so we can, you know, give them some help.
Chair recognizes County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick things. Number one, is your grandmother Barbara Anthony by chance, current county clerk? She would be very proud. Second thing is, I can't tell you how much I appreciate both of you all bringing this and presenting this. This is a challenge that we all face, each city and the county and every county throughout the state. Mayor Best has brought this to my attention numerous times, as we've tried to find some common solution, and it is just, it's not only hard to find out what our percentage of homeless is, because it changes all the time, but finding a common solution is one of our greatest challenges we have throughout the county. So, I would encourage both of you all to stick with this, join the efforts, continue to come talk to us as you learn more, and we'd be glad to work any way we can. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, once again. Sir, we do it. Next speaker.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Members of the County Commission. I'm Scott Mason, 408 North Rome Street, speaking as a board on behalf of the City of Harriman. We also have Harriman's Mayor Best here. Charlie's here to hold this prop. I don't get nowhere close to the mic. Just asking the County Commission's support and approval on the consideration of the Resolution 122406 that y'all are gonna have before you tonight. The City of Harriman is requesting $15,000 for the Community Investment Fund, and we would use that in partnership that we have with Michael Dunn for the creation and development of the digitally connected inclusive playground that you see here, one of the largest and most unique in the area. And we'd be putting that on the land where our community center is, next to the splash pad. So, just asking for your consideration. We hope to have this in place by the time spring rolls around, again, in partnership with Michael Dunn, and be beneficial not only to kids in Harriman, but kids all over Roman County of all abilities.
Charlie, can you hold that more in front of your...
Not now.
Good job, Charlie. Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Mr. Mason, next time, stand up a little closer to the mic.
All right, next. Anyone else want to address the County Commission's now? All right, hearing done, seeing none, we'll move on to the County Attorney's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've received a settlement offer last Wednesday on the HME bumper truck lawsuit. So, at some point, Mr. Chairman, I need to take the body into executive session.
I'd say time now. Let's go into the executive session.
Doctors right here.
Now, just right here in your car.
I'm sorry, sir. All right, from thirty.
Then I'll look up there and say every day. We're taller than our parents. So, when this guy makes many first events, everybody's getting to go up there. Somewhere I try to see him. Hey, Heather. I'm saying they're all up in your name.
I think I think I said it.
So, you have to go.
We might as well.
They say he's an hour.
Are you feeling tight?
So, Mr. Leftfield, the floor is still yours?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
So, when do we elect to vote on that?
Whenever you decide to put it on the agenda tonight.
Let's do it while you're still having the floor, how about that?
That's fine with me.
All right, so we've heard from the county attorney in our closed court session with Lehman and his advice and the advice of the emergency management director. So, I'll entertain a motion for action for either one.
I'll make a motion that we accept the cash offer that was mentioned. I'll second.
All right, so I have a second motion by Mr. Duff, a second by Mr. Henderson. All right, any debate on that? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Barry?
Yes.
Brackett?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Duff?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Fourteen yes.
So, based on this, I will inform HME that the county commission accepts their offer to buy back the truck for seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And nothing else to report?
That's all I have.
All right, then we'll move to the county executive report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all the information I have is for you in your rundown report. It's all for you, I'd be glad to ask your questions.
All right, any questions of the county thick?
I'm good.
All right, Chair recognized Commissioner Brackett.
The homes, I've not seen it unless I'm overlooked in the new home permits or I might overlook that, I've looked at it.
Yep, they're in there.
Permits by structure or.
Yeah, the blue is new homes. Show me which one I've looked through.
Page three. Box. Three and then four. Of course.
Compared same month.
So, okay.
So, they continue to be strong?
Yes, that's what, so thirty, we're averaging over thirty, well, over thirty.
Yep, in between twenty-five and thirty-five per month. We've been there for a while. All right, any other questions for the county thick? At this time.
I do. I'll go ahead while you're, you okay?
Yeah, I'm waiting, sir.
All right, just making sure.
No, I'm not going out. You weren't even here, so don't even.
He was watching.
I got you.
I was looking earlier at this on the, I just want to remind us on something with the numbers, if you look at the numbers to the wrong county jail. We have not been in, we are currently out of plan of action for us replying back to the state for having to come up with numbers. But also want to encourage us to stay aggressive towards helping keep those numbers down. When we were talking about this at one time, we were talking about all kinds of things to help out that would, from everything, from education on. And it's kind of, if you'll admit, it's kind of went dormant in a lot of ways. But if you will look at those numbers on the rundown, they're creeping back up at a slow rate and we're kind of getting back to capacity. So, I would encourage us to kind of get a little more aggressive to finding solutions to helping the recidivism rate coming back in.
Mr. Wilson, you make a great point and that's one of the reasons why we keep this in here is because we can't just forget about this. While the jail staff in our judicial system has done an incredible job getting us to where we are, getting us out of that plan of action. We still have some pretty major classification issues that we will have to address, even if this, our population stays where it is indefinitely, which we know it won't. So, we, we continue, and that, I think that problem is best handled through long-range planning. The jail alternative committee needs to be obviously involved in guiding how we look at that, but we can't just forget about it, we got to keep it on the radar. So, I appreciate you saying that.
Agreed.
All right, Chair recognized Commissioner Berg?
Yes, sir. Bless the record, on our financial report there that you have, anything that caused you stomach ache or anything?
No, we're going to start projections next week and then January start the budget process for next year.
We did get an early Christmas present, you want to share that with? You want me to, Jeffers have voice, use that. Because of the construction for the TBA converting from coal to gas, we received an impact payment from TBA three weeks ago for nine-hundred forty-six thousand dollars. That is on top of our pilot payments that we receive annually from them. We will receive that payment for the next three years and in the three years following that, they will taper it down seventy-five, fifty, seventy-five percent, fifty percent, twenty-five percent down to zero. So, we're still looking at impact payments for the construction of the gas-fired power plant for the next six to seven years. So, that was a great Christmas, early, early Christmas.
Well, would that money go in capital or?
Budget committee voted on Thursday night to deposit that money in one-seventy-one balance, correct? All right, any other questions for the county thick? Commissioner Berg, will you join me up front please? So, each year, I make our veterans a gift or something, or I try to. I got behind this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Hooks, I went and seen him earlier at his house and I gave him his stick. So, he wondered why I was giving him a stick, he said he was walking fine after the horse. But, it's got a Marine Corps medallion in it. So, and we can cut it to any length, but whatever you desire there with it. He said the same thing.
Parallel, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right, that is correct. Thank you very much.
And.
That'll extend your pickleball play. All right, we got two special orders, confirmation of reappointment of Dr. Vogel as medical examiner, do I have a motion?
Motion?
I got a second offer.
All right.
This is not showing it.
Okay, got it.
Greg's motion.
All right, Commissioner Ferguson?
I just think Doc's done a good job and I don't see why we can't reappoint him for another five years.
All right, Commissioner Wilson?
I think it's a no-brainer, I reverb what he said.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Confirmation of reappointment for Herman Ratkey, Freddie Dutton, Holly Precise, and Crystal All to the Ag Committee. These terms will end December twenty-sixth to your current. Motion by Brackett, second by Gann, Commissioner Brackett.
Glad you're willing to do it.
Commissioner Gann?
Yeah, I appreciate that they're willing to serve.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. All right, going into new business and just reminding people of the twelfth day we want it to end. Resolution twelve, twenty-four oh one, resolution authorizing the name of a private drive located in the fourth civil district of Wrong County off Long Grove. Motion by Ferguson, second by Kirby, Commissioner Ferguson.
Go through the planning commission and it pays their vote for it.
Commissioner Kirby?
Not to vote.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Resolution twelve twenty-four oh two, resolution adopting the rules and regulations of the Division Water Resource Groundwater Protection Program. Motion by Brackett, second by Hamilton, Commissioner Brackett.
Let's get it going.
Dr. Hamilton?
Nothing for her.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Resolution twelve twenty-four oh three, resolution authorizing the county executive and the director of building and codes to contract with Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation. Motion by. Motion by Brackett, second by Gann, Commissioner Brackett.
Nothing.
Commissioner Gann?
Don't worry, he's not to vote.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries. Resolution twelve twenty-four oh four, resolution creating an appeals process and procedures for variances regarding permits and subsurface sewage disposal system. Motion by. Motion by Cunningham, a second by Henderson, Commissioner Cunningham.
Is there anything we need to hear about on this?
It came through the building codes committee.
Then that's first.
All right, Commissioner Henderson?
None further, sir.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Twelve twenty-four oh six, a resolution authorizing the approval of funds from the capital project fund, one-seventy-one. Okay, I had to check mark on five, but let me read five. Twelve twenty-four oh five, a resolution authorizing the building and codes department to adopt and charge fees for the groundwater protection. Motion by Gann, second by Kirby, Commissioner Gann?
Into the committee with approval.
All right, Commissioner Kirby?
Nothing.
Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. I will admit, I do need new glasses. All right. Resolution twelve twenty-four oh six, a resolution authorizing the approval of funds from the capital project fund, one-seventy-one. Community investment fund, sub-fund to fund a capital project in the city of Hermitage. All right, motion by Goss, second by Brackett, Commissioner Goss?
I think Goss explained it very well, again. Again, District Two is setting the standard for the county and stuff and I encourage the rest of the county commissioners to get behind what the city of Hermon is doing and you have to go there.
I appreciate that. Commissioner Brackett.
I've got to agree with Commissioner Goss. Guys, thank you for the way you presented, taking the time. That's what we've asked for. I know it's something I asked for when it first started coming about. I think you do a great job and I wish some would fall in line and look at the leadership. Thank you.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
That was good.
All right, motion carries. Resolution twelve twenty-four oh seven, a resolution amending the projects in the general capital fund, one seventy-one ARP rescue plan. Motion by? Motion by Doug, second by Brackett, Commissioner Doug.
Yes, we met, the ARP committee met and recommended the changes with the remaining funds from the, from the ARP. Waited you left to say anything about that?
Sure. Committee members worked hard to basically allocate the remainder of all of the ARP funds and this even included some of the leftovers from other expenditures that, that once the projects were finished, we gathered up all the remainder of funds, put them into one pot and came up with recommendations. The committee made a few changes, but what you have before you is the final recommendation from the committee on how those funds should be spent. We are very hopeful that this is it for ARP funds. That will be fantastic for our staff to get these things done and great for our community to get these projects funded. That's all.
All right, Commissioner Brackett, you had a second.
Just invited us down.
All right, any discussion? Commissioner Berg?
Yes, we have, we have our Comcast represented with us tonight. Where are we now on, on the, I know we had a last minute. Down at Crystal Cove. Where are we now at Crystal Cove?
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Courtney Durritt, Comcast, sorry, external affairs manager for Comcast, fifty-seven twenty Asheville Highway, Knoxville, Tennessee. Commissioner Barry, we have identified, well, let me go back to the state locations that were identified and I'm handing out the map of sub-area two for Roan County and a very brief project overview of what Comcast will be doing. So Comcast was awarded the last mile grant for Roan County Sub-Area Two, which includes the areas of Keremun, Rockwood, and it does include the names of Crystal Cove. This map unfortunately is very, very tiny for me to fit the all of Sub-Area Two onto one page, even with it being almost eleven by seventeen. It still is not very legible. You can find it online through the state broadband office. But what Comcast was under the impression of was that the state would identify every single home that did, that was either considered unserved, meaning no access to broadband, or underserved, meaning it was below one hundred upload speeds and download speeds of twenty. So, excuse me, reverse that. And so we assumed that all of Crystal Cove, the existing buildings, the structures, we can't count the ones to be built, would be included considering there is no service out there. That was not the case. There are only five from what has been given to us as the boundaries of Crystal Cove. There are only five residences considered under this grant. But what Comcast is planning on doing is to serve every house that is along the way.
So, so when you look at the map, the five houses that have been identified, are they in the back of the subdivision?
They are sporadic. They are sporadic. So hopefully this, we, again, we haven't started the design phase yet because we are waiting on the state to give us the contract, to have an executed contract before we can begin. But once we do, we are going to be looking at that. They're very top of mind.
We have addresses on this?
Pardon me?
Do we have addresses on this?
Not specific. It's by latitude, longitude. I can look it up. It'll take a moment, but I can do that. But.
Really, we really need addresses so that we can go back and look and see are we gonna, are we gonna get five more houses, are we gonna get fifteen more houses? Are we gonna, you know, because if it's just going in, then.
I'm happy to get those addresses for you.
So you still haven't been, you still haven't had the contract signed from the state?
We have not. We're waiting on the state to send it to us. And that's, that's pretty much been the MO since the beginning of this, this grant application process for round two of last mile grants is this was originally supposed to be awarded end of May, early June, and it was not awarded or even announced until the very end of October. So.
So, so once, once you get that contract signed, how soon then will you begin?
We will immediately begin the walkout design phase and then once that is complete, which based on preliminary, the, the addresses that we have on the map, we can go, we go ahead and already kind of have a plan in mind of how we're gonna design this and what, but we don't know the terrain until we get out there and actually walk it. So I expect that for the last six months, hopefully. And then we will immediately start construction, all projects, all constructions. Everything has to be operational by December twenty-two, twenty-sixth.
So walk out, walk out, that's what you're talking about. You're walking, you're walking the territory.
Walking it, to design, to know what we have to do.
They haven't done that yet?
Not yet, because we haven't, we don't have the contract executed from state.
Okay, so as time being of the essence, when, when do we expect the contract?
We expect the contract by the end of the year.
And so there's nothing we can do with the existing map? It's, it's too late to do anything at all with that?
Correct.
That's gonna require other beings or.
Correct.
What we're gonna have to do is let it play out. They'll have to, both Comcast and Spectrum will have to design where they're gonna take it. Let's see who it covers and if there's anybody left, we'll have to go back to ECD and say, you said this grant was supposed to cover every unserved and underserved house and it didn't. Why not? And I think that's gonna be our own remediation at that point.
So, so you have to spend your four hundred or your three million dollars by December twenty-sixth or next year?
Correct.
I mean, thirty-first and next year, twenty-sixth.
Correct. Well, and, and, and not just spend, the project has to be completed.
So you're under that, you're under that same.
We are. It's, it's two years. And it will serve an additional one thousand fifty-three homes or locations that were identified. It's the red dots on this map.
So the, the thousand fifty-three are only Roan County residents?
They're only Sub-Area Two residents, correct. And they are only within, if you look at that map, it's, it's north of the river. There's a portion to the southeast that's considered Sub-Area Three. Comcast was not awarded that. That was charter. And so, was it charter or eighteen?
Charter.
Charter.
One asterisk.
Correct. That's right. And so we will be doing all of Sub-Area Two and that's the additional one thousand fifty-three locations that were identified by the state.
All right. Doug, Commissioner Berg?
It's just hard and found that we can come this far with, with that project and just now find that we've got five, five homes in there that, you know, that qualify.
Part of what happened, I think, where some locations were potentially removed from being considered unserved or underserved was a, the challenge process, the map challenge process, which any other entity could come in and say, actually, no, that's incorrect. Those locations do receive services. And as having to participate myself in some of the research to prove that those in fact were unserved, an example we would get a lot would be a larger conglomerate company saying, this apartment complex is served, when really it was just the, the front office of the complex that was receiving internet and none of the actual residential dwellings had service. So we had to prove that, that that was the case on multiple occasions. So that, that could be where this mishap went with the final list.
All right, Chair recognize, Commissioner Goss.
Packet, sorry, it's Brackett.
All right, Commissioner Brackett.
I've heard Rockwood, so the meeting the other night, Kingston and East is gonna be a part of this with Comcast, correct?
Kingston, Hermon, Rockwood are all in Sub-Area Two.
Yes.
The Sub-Area Two, and it's, like you said, it changed, but I know two miles from here, three miles, we don't have it. So, and I get chewed on that as much as I do when we're building schools. But I can tell people, so in the next six months, playing face, but by twenty-twenty-sixth, if you don't have it, you should have it, I guess, right? And.
That is the point of the last mile grant.
Right.
Now, I don't, I can't speak for, I don't, I don't know every single one thousand five fifty-three addresses that have been identified on this map. However, if you wanna send me those addresses, I'm happy to look, like I said, for Commissioner Barry. It's, we have it as longitude, latitude and so we will, I am happy to turn that into very specific addresses for you.
So this is not the end of it. I mean, this is gonna be a, it sounds like a mess.
What's gonna happen, there's gonna be a few left out. There's no doubt about it. And when that happens, we'll identify those and go back to ECD and say, until then, you said this was supposed to cover everybody and it didn't, so now what?
And I do want to reiterate that we're not just going to only serve these. Let's say we, we have a house that's on here and then there are, for some reason, three and then another one on the other side of those three. We are going to serve those three along the way. We will not pass others to get to another one. We are not gonna do that. We will serve the along the way as we will.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Any, Commissioner Park?
So I guess South River, Sub-Area One.
Correct.
So who, who's gonna serve it?
Charter Spectrum Southeast. And I know, I know volunteer or.
Twin Lakes.
Twin Lakes has been working on it too. We have multiple carriers out there. Before the last mile grant process is chartered.
And they didn't request anyone?
They're already laying cable, they're already installing it.
They, and they weren't part of the discussions the first time around when we did get it and Comcast was. This is, this allocation from ARP grant, ARP funds here is really just a continuation of that initial process with Comcast.
And just to add to County Executive Russell's point, the history of this, in twenty-twenty-two, we applied for a grant. All things were pointing in our way, our, our decision, or our way of being approved and then it wasn't. So the, the request for the additional match was because that added extra points to our application. It put our Comcast match to the grant funds over thirty percent, which gave us extra points and made us look more favorable as to being able to be the provider for the area. And we also applied for Sub-Area Three, but did not receive that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Brackett, I'm sorry, everybody can't have HBS, you end of that coming in.
All right, motion carries. Resolution twelve twenty-four zero, a resolution to adopt Riley Creek Campground nightly at monthly fee increase. Motion by Brackett, second by Parks, Commissioner Brackett.
I'm just gonna say I'm against it, just for the fact that we have done nothing yet. I mean, there's not really a swing set at Riley Creek. I don't see going up on the rates. I think once we start doing some improvements, I've been an advocate for it for quite some time. I mean, we've got a new campground at Rockwood that has some stuff. I just, I just can't see charging more money for nothing. Our power's in and out, the water's turned off now. Just my part of it.
Commissioner Parks, you had to say?
Uh, I think it's time to go up. We hadn't raised rates down there in quite some time and, you know, the cost of doing business goes up all the time and, and it's time to, not necessarily raise the rates to where you put yourself out of business, but you also don't wanna cut yourself short either. You know, I mean, you wanna be in what the market's paying. And so I think it's time to raise the rates.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognize, Commissioner Goss?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. I don't know if it's gonna be for Wade or for Josh Wong, but where are we staying on far as the rates compare to like the area? Other than that?
We did.
Mr. Chairman?
We did, we did a, we did a rate study. That's how we, that's how we concluded these rates. I think the other thing that's important is when we first started looking at Riley Creek, we were little over a million dollars, I think, and, and. Expansions. That's, that's increasing exponentially now. I mean, we, those numbers, those numbers are nowhere near good. So this, this gets us nowhere near where we need to be. But rather than going from here, as Commissioner Parks said, going from here to the next, to the next level, which would be a gigantic gap, we decided to go ahead and take it. We're still in great shape with, with the area and, and still looking at, looking at what those final costs are gonna be. Got our lease now, so we can at least go ahead and move forward.
All right, thank you. Chair recognize, Commissioner Cunningham?
I have a question. On monthly fee increases or monthly fees, do people just live out there?
Some.
I mean, that's thirty years at a time or?
Some do.
Yes, and we've got two, we've got two rate structures.
Do what?
We've got two rate structures. So you got a nightly where you can, you can pay, you can pay eleven months and, and, and the other thing there is we've got to look at and see is if we are in violation of our own RV code that we passed a couple, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, that, the, the short-term rental code you all passed two months ago, like recently. The way our practice and even in, in our fee structure at Riley Creek is probably not in compliance with our own rules. And so we have a county-wide compliance issue that we've got to dig into and figure out how to standardize and get across the board in compliance with what we've said we wanna do with short-term rentals. That's just reality where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Brackett, did you RT us?
Josh, I was just gonna ask, when we say we compared them around, who do we compare to? What do they have? Is it apples to apples, oranges to oranges? What are we, what are we comparing to?
Yes, some, obviously some are and some aren't probably. We, we tried to do those with bathhouses, those with, with electricity, those with sewer. So we tried to do, we just tried to do a comparison with, with what was, I think Josh said out, what, we got about eight or ten? Different ones.
I, I feel like if we go up and I've camped down there several times, you have electricity, you don't have electricity. You got water break. I'm just saying, if, if we go up on these rates right now and we've not made any repairs and we're behind, way behind, I, I just don't think we're doing the people justice. I mean, we're not, we've done nothing to. You go down there and you pay and your air conditioner works an hour or two and then you have to come in, somebody has to fix it. I just don't think we're doing justice.
I would just say probably two years ago when we did the last rate increase, we didn't lose any camper.
But we've done nothing in two years.
And, and, and none of these other campgrounds. I'm just, I'm just saying, that, that's where we are. We just, we just decided that's what we needed to do to get ready for now and, and, and for the future.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Goss.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I didn't make a question clear earlier, but the dollar wise, what's the difference? Let's just use the monthly one. I assume the new charges are gonna be five twenty-five. What are the other campgrounds doing on their monthly charge? So nobody?
Josh, do you have information?
Yes, I do. So, the annual rate is twenty sixty-nine and ninety, sixty-nine and ninety-nine dollars. This is per night. It's on the way that we have it. Four seasons is three hundred a month. Soaring equals fifty-five forty-two per night. And Hornsby Hollow ranges anywhere from forty-two to seventy-five a night.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Josh. All right, hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries, uh, 13, one. Moving on to Resolution 122409, a resolution to reflect, uh, change in salary and benefits of the Waste Water Fund 204, and it's been approved by the Rome County Board of Public Utilities. Motion by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Barry?
Board of Public Utilities met with the, um, Budget Committee the other night and presented, presented this and, uh, indicated they were in sound financial group, uh, position, and so, uh, Budget Committee adopted.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
And then further?
All right, any discussion, hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. 14, all right, Resolution 122410, a resolution of the Rome County, uh, Board of Public Utilities to amend the 2425 budget. Commissioner Henderson, uh, Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Henderson.
None, first.
Commissioner Gann.
Just follows after the first, sir.
All right, end of discussion. Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. 1224, oh, sorry, wait a minute. Motion carries. 122411, resolution naming the road, uh, through Rome County Park, Super Jack Way, Resolution 122410. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Henderson.
I've said this many times, uh, that little feller brought a lot of people in this community together, uh, people that didn't pray, prayed, you know, and that says a lot, and, uh, you know, when I came up with this idea, I called Rome County, I said, why you think, hey, let's do it, you know, it's no brain, it's really done, and, you know, Jack, like, uh, you know, going out in the woods and exploring and stuff like that, and Rome County Park's the perfect place to do that, and, uh, I just, uh, I just appreciate everybody's support on this, and, uh, thank it'd be, it'd be a shitey county.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Commissioner Wilson, you had to say.
Uh, just to add to that, Junior, I appreciate you doing that.
Yes.
I have to admit, when I was reading, reading the packet, and I got two, this one, this one, this one made me smile. Tyler, you and Ariel, uh, Jack impacted this community more than you could ever imagine. It brought people together, and that young man showed more courage, and, and in my eyes, and everyone's here, he is a true hero. We love you both, and we know you're hurting, but know that this community was behind you 100%, and we will always look at Super Jack as our hero.
Well said. Exactly, thank you. Commissioner Barry?
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think when, when we have something like this happen, um, in, in our community, um, you know, there, there are very few people that you can look back on and say, they, they're going to leave a legacy. Well, Jack's going to leave a legacy, not only in Rome County, but from one end of this state to the other, because at, at St. Jude's, those folks are, are integrated, they're all there for the same reason, and, and, and so he's, he's going to, he's going to leave a legacy that, uh, that's going to be far beyond, uh, anything that, that we can even imagine now, and, and, and I think, I think it just goes to show the heart that Jack had, that, that, that family had, and that the citizens of Rome County had, I mean, our employees got, our employees stepped up, uh, here in this courthouse to, to take care of, of, of Ariel, and, and, and that's, you know, the, not many people give, give up their time.
Nope.
And, and, and these people did it, I guess, without a question. Uh, Madam Clerk, thanks for you, for, for, for your support, and, and for your, uh, your generosity with her, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you could, I'd just like to present, uh, a sign, this one is going to be for you, Ariel, and there'll be another one that we will put up at Rome County Park, I think Jack's been his second birthday at Rome County Park, so that's even more fitting that we should, that we should name Rome County Park Super Jack Way.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution 122412, resolution to revise, uh, section of Rome County Purchasing Manual and to authorize the purchasing agent to update sections, uh, in the purchasing manual as needed due to changes in legislation. Motion by Henderson, second by Kirby, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, not, not.
Commissioner Kirby. All right, any discussion? Hearing done, see?
Uh, just for awareness, this, I hate that it follows this part of the agenda, uh, but just for your awareness, we are going to receive a, uh, an audit finding, uh, from, from the Comp Control this year, and it is something we contested, uh, but it was basically a, uh, a, a difference of opinion that the auditor had with us, we did a roof repair at Ridgeview Elementary, I believe it was Ridgeview, is that right? Ridgeview Elementary, we used a co-op, uh, to bid out the services to repair that roof, um, and the, the auditors came back and said, you cannot purchase construction materials we, using a co-op. And we thought that to be new construction, you can't use a co-op to do new construction, we didn't see this as new construction, we saw it as repaired, that's where we had a difference of opinion, we tried to fight that, but by the time we took it back to our auditors, we even called an emergency meeting of the Purchasing Commission to make this change before our exit conference, so we went into exit conference with this change already happening in the Purchase Commission, a Purchasing Commission, um, and they still wouldn't accept it because they've given this as an audit finding in, in counties across the state already. So we really had no recourse after that, that being said, we've made the changes to reflect, um, state law, that this is a different, an update to state law, and that's why we're going to get that. So we did everything we could to fight it, we still believe it, we don't deserve it, but we're going to get an audit finding, and that's what this is from.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries. Resolution 122413, a resolution to adopt the Rome County Government Annual Budget approval clause. Motion by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Gann. Commissioner Barry?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, this, this, uh, some of these changes came about because of the salary suit, uh, that we had, uh, clerk, and, and some of this stuff was, was, Chancellor asked us, asked us to do, but, but mainly what it does is it gives, it gives every department, uh, a timeline for our budget, it gives them a timeline for amendments that they want to make before, before we actually get to this body, uh, so it's probably something that was needed, uh, we, we've, uh, we've got it down now, I think one thing that, that we might, that we really going to have to watch is, this is going to put a little more pressure on our committees to come up with their, with their budget, so you're going to have to watch this timeline as you do committees, because when it comes February and March, the calendar fills up with, with meetings, uh, you, you may get, you may get left out, so you're going to have, going to have to watch the calendar, watch these dates of, on, on our, on our committees, so, uh, this dispels out what we need to do from start to finish. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gann? Uh, I guess Florida County Executive.
It, um, I just want you all to know, County Attorney was, um, not only involved in representing us to the salary suit, but in us coming to compliance with the court order from the suit, uh, there were two things that we had to accomplish, this is one of them, um, and so we feel like by establishing this timeline extremely deliberately and firmly, that we are in compliance with the court order. The second thing we have to do, which we're working on right now, is creating a resource guide, uh, for all life positions in the courthouse, uh, not, not a comprehensive salary compare, uh, study, but looking at life positions, that will go to, once Jennifer Suter and I complete that work, it'll go to Personnel Committee, and then once it goes through Personnel Committee, it'll come to you before it goes into the employee handbooks, that all county elected officers can use as a guide to hire, um, and what to pay their people. Does that make sense? I just feel like that was a little bit muddy, but, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Our motion carries, 14. All right, what will be Resolution 122414, I'll need to waive the 12-day rule, so if I have a motion, do I?
Select it.
All right, got a motion and second, anything, Commissioner Henderson, you?
Uh, no, it's, uh, this is the one time we can get to try to do something, honor somebody that's, that's worthy of the pen job.
All right, we're just, let me, let me.
Appreciate that.
We're waiving the 12-day rule right now, next I'll post the resolution, Commissioner Gann?
None, sir.
All right, how do you want to do it?
You can do all those.
All those in favor of waiving this 12-day rule, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. All right, also, let me caution you with using the 12-day rule, how, everybody knows I'm an opponent against the 12-day rule, I only think that it should be used stopgap fundings, uh, purpose only, to fund County Government. I hold the County Executive and his sub-offices accountable for delivering information to our subcommittee in a timely manner. I don't want to sit down the night of a commission meeting and drop four resolutions only to vote on, we've had that discussion last month. So likewise, I want our commission body to do the same, uh, with our County Executive and his offices. So I just want to caution you on that, I really don't like using the 12-day rule, but I, we can use it, uh, as needed for stopgap, it's what, but it's originally set up, uh, as the County Attorney and Research Force stated, in our rules and procedures, uh, that we vote on annually, every year we vote to, and, employ that, so, with that said, uh, any, any discussion?
I've got a question.
It's probably not numbered.
Well, it, it's not, but I'm thinking we went from 12 to 14, did you do 13?
I thought I did, there is.
Yeah, he did.
The pause, I'm only talking about the middle 13.
Yeah, it was voted on.
I thought, yeah, we're just making sure, okay, because it, we wouldn't have so far gone, I got you.
That's what we just voted on.
Right, got you. We just make sure you did.
Thanks for looking at.
But you're doing great, I like, I like that.
And you voted yes for it, by the way. 122414, uh, this is a resolution to memorialize a portion of Pine Ridge Road in honor of Jerry Gartner. Do I have a motion? Motion by Hendrick, second by Barry, Commissioner Henderson.
Yeah, I mean, this is, like I said before, the one time that we get to do something to honor one of our own, and Jerry Gartner has been a, was a lifelong friend of my family, and, uh, good Christian man, and, uh, I just, we just felt like it'd be something good to honor in, in memory of, so, I appreciate y'all's support.
Commissioner Barry?
Yeah, uh, served with him for several years here on this commission, uh, he was probably a 15 or 18-year veteran of, of, of this commission, thanks to his daughter, 20?
20 years.
20 years, uh, kind of goes by, uh, his daughter's here, uh, I just, I think it's always fitting if, if, uh, you know, if there's some way that we can, that we can honor some folks, and, and thank you for, for waiving the 12, I think this, this time of year, uh, we need all the happiness we can get, and I hope that, that brings happiness to the family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right, and this does not change the non-binding address.
No, it's just a memorial.
It's just a memorial.
Yeah, it is a state road as well, is that a state and city on that road? Is it not a county road?
I don't get that.
It's state, let go of state.
But can Senator Jaeger wanted this in front, uh, the, the commission, uh, a vote accomplished, he's, they.
So this is just really a non-binding resolution?
Right, okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing done, seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Terry?
Yes.
Rocket?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
Gann?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Kirby?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
14, yes.